Workshop for September 21st. Call the meeting in order. Jenny, if you can take the roll.
Here.
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 Mayor Thorson.
Here. Coram is present. Motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
By Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O's. Motion carries. So we have two topics for tonight. The first one is the Sean Rivet's house, 2483 Second Avenue. In that, we're going to discuss about the grant funding. And I believe tonight, we're going to come to a decision whether or not we're going to move ahead with that grant funding. So I'm not going to guarantee, Sean, if it's going to go one way or the other, but we got good, we'll have the good discussion tonight. And I believe we'll have the engineer giving some documentation. But I'll turn it over to you, City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Up first is the 2483 Second Avenue Flood Hazard Mitigation Grant Funding Assistant Discussion. I think we'll start off with our city attorney, Soren Matic, please.
You know, I actually, Morgan and I are prepared, Morgan and I are prepared to discuss it. I think in terms of order of operation, given it's a, this started out as a discussion on water and drainage, Morgan's prepared to report and would like to go through that. Then if we start talking about the grant and options, that's where I was prepared to step in. So if I could turn it over to Morgan, that's where we'd start.
Okay. Welcome, Morgan.
Thank you, Soren. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the memo in your packet is a brief summary of some of the information surrounding this property. It's located at 2483 Second Avenue. And the, really the feedback that staff is looking for definitively here at this workshop in terms of staff direction revolves around the use of grant dollars that are made available by the DNR through the flood protection program. Those grant dollars were applied at council direction some months ago. We've received information from the DNR stating that the grant dollars are available should the city proceed forward or want to proceed forward with using those dollars. I'll go into a little more detail on that. And just from a timing standpoint, we have received communication from the DNR representatives saying that they would like to know one way or the other, as soon as tomorrow, actually, because there are other communities competing for those dollars. So they've earmarked them, should the council want to proceed with this, these use of funds. But we do need to let them know tomorrow, just so we're all on the same page. With respect to summary of the, of the property in question, this is a property that, you know, has experienced flooding over the years, specifically, and there's information in more detail in the memo. But July 15th of 2011 was a notable event. The city of North St. Paul received over five inches of rainfall in about a 24-hour period. There's some pictures that were supplied by the property owner, who's also in attendance here tonight, of that flooding incident and of some of the damage or some of the conditions that were experienced on that particular date. There have been other occasions during high rainfall events where there has been localized ponding and flooding in the roadway. And after some time, those waters do recede and drain back into the city's storm sewer system. And again, there's a depiction of the property in terms of a location map. We also, the city, paid for and had a local land surveyor conduct a land survey of the area, both the property in question itself and also some of the surrounding area. That survey was conducted after the installation of some local drainage improvements on the northwest corner of this property. So a new pond was constructed with the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project and some grading and also some extension of storm sewer, which would be in the back alley serving the rear yard of this property. And there are some, also some references to other studies that have been conducted within the last 10 years that have identified some of the situations in which some of that flooding does occur. And basically, in a general sense, this particular property does sit within a low spot within the city. And that, that low spot does receive drainage from a fairly large drainage area throughout that corner of that area of the city, as per normal, right? And so just low-lying areas, obviously, are going to be the receiving end of rainfall when it does occur within the city. And there is municipal storm sewer system, as North St. Paul does have, that serves the right-of-way, the rights-of-way, some of the alleyways in and around the area. The particular nuance of the storm sewer system in this area is that the front yard of 2483 Second Avenue is served by one section of a system that goes down Helen Street. And the back half of the property is served by another system that actually goes out via First Street. So two separate systems, which just from a straight engineering standpoint, you typically need to look at both of them independently. They both behave differently during rain events and they both have different characteristics unique to them. There is, in the, in the survey, which is also attached within the packet, there's some very specific information in terms of the lay of the land, how much slope is available from the home to the low areas, both in the backyard and in the front yard, with the street being kind of where things in the front half of the yard would drain towards. And some of the information specific to that property in terms of how high the home is with respect to other homes in the area. And it's worth noting that, you know, as a, as a modern condition, certainly not in existence at the time that the home was built, but the city of North St. Paul does have a fairly standard and protective set of codes and ordinances that require new home builders or builders that would reconstruct a home if there was going to be demolition and a reconstruction of a new home, to set homes at a specific elevation with respect to flood elevations that might occur either at capacity of the existing storm sewer system, as North St. Paul has it, or above capacity, which we know that storm sewer systems within cities' municipalities, not just unique to North St. Paul, but they are only designed to take the capacity of a certain amount of rainfall. And we know that there are going to be events, such as what happened in July of 2011, where the capacities of that system are exceeded. That's why it's important for cities to have these modern flood protection ordinances in place, such that if there is ponding or flooding in a low area or a street or a backyard, that there is some separation from that property. It's not uncommon for older properties such as, or homes such as that, that's on 2483 Second Avenue, to
Recording in progress.
be substandard, meaning that they might not meet those modern flood protection ordinances. That's not uncommon. There are many, many homes throughout North St. Paul that are built prior to the mid-2000s or late 2000 aughts, if you will, that when those, those codes and ordinance would have been adopted by the city. And they exist as legal non-conforming homes. You know, there's no requirement for homeowners to lift their homes up, per se, to meet those requirements. But if a building permit is pulled that affects a foundation elevation or a low opening elevation, such as a garage threshold or an addition, for example, the intent for those codes and ordinances is that that new addition or building construction would then meet the new protection standards, such that it provides that protection from an extreme flooding event, such as documented in 2011. Again, protection from, you know, property damage and that sort of thing.
Recording in progress.
Now that we're recording this, I mentioned that, that there are design standards
Recording in progress.
for municipal storm sewer systems. It's also documented that precipitation amounts have been increasing over time. And as recently as 2012 or 13, about the, the standards within the state of Minnesota with which engineers or hydrologists or those sorts of people use to predict where flood elevations are, they were increased. So that's important to understand, that as, over time, as the cyclical precipitation amounts, the amounts of rainfall that we get, as that changes over time, we're using the most current information that we have available with which to design our storm sewers, with which to set the elevations for the homes within our communities, set the elevations for egress windows or basement windows at which, you know, floodwaters, if they do actually get up to the point where they would flow into the home, that they can be set accordingly. And there was a jump from the old standard to the new standard, which is called Atlas 14. That's just a new precipitation standard that is nationally, has nationally at this point been generally adopted. It's what we use in the city for, again, review of plans or private improvements within the city in terms of approving permits. It's also what we use now for design and construction of our storm sewer as well, too. But the standards, again, as I mentioned before, for those design is to carry, there's specific information in the memo, but really, you know, 80 to 85% of the rainfall events that we might have in Minnesota on any given year. It might be a little bit more than that, might be a little bit less, but in general, there are going to be times in those extreme rain events, whether they get to the level of 2011 or not. Sometimes it might just be some areas around the catch basins in a low intersection where you might see a little bit of water, not enough to get over the top of the curb, but a little bit of water. And again, it takes some time, usually fairly quickly, I guess, within a matter of hours, that that water actually will catch up with the system and recede back. But again, the storm sewer in no city is designed to really handle what North St. Paul experienced in 2011 and was experienced citywide, I think, and not just in that rain event. But we have had others over time where both 2483 Second Avenue was impacted, other properties were impacted as well, too. And that's something that the city is aware of, that that does occur. And it's something that the city should be aware of, that it will occur in the future. There's, there's, that would, the weather cannot be predicted, similar to on the East Coast recently in the news with the hurricane. I mean, they had a three-day prediction there, where they knew there was going to be some flash flooding. That's not something that we always know coming in advance in North St. Paul, but it tends to be very localized. And it could be even just one portion of the city and the south portion or the north portion doesn't get as much rain and we don't see that type of flooding activity that, when it does occur. So with that, I'll mention what was done in 2020 in the rear half of this lot. Again, that's a separate storm sewer system that goes out via First Street. The filtration basin for that project was constructed, so there was a home on the corner of the alley and First Street that was purchased by the city and folded into the improvements within the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project. Prior to that project, a home sat on that lot. And there really was no place for any of the rainwater or localized ponding or anything that might be impacted by grading that might be not ideal in the homes in and around that block. So since that time, with that filtration basin, there is certainly a much better opportunity for less flooding, less localized ponding in the rear lots. And storm sewer was even extended to be out approximately even with the rear yard of 2483 Second Avenue. So prior to 2020, much less well-realized drainage in the rear yards. Now, current conditions, much better situation. And in fact, if we did have another rain event similar to 2011 now today, as documented in the survey attached to the memo, there is actually a way for that water to get from the front street into the back and into the pond as kind of an emergency overflow route. That's what we would call that. Now, knowing that there is a basement window on 2483 that is below kind of that flood level, it would still be expected to take water in that situation. But there is better drainage and a better path than did previously exist by public infrastructure investment, which also served some other purposes. It also provides a water quality benefit, which was required as a part of the watershed district permitting for that 2020 project. So it served multiple purposes. Now, will that alleviate the possibility or the probability that a repeat event in 2011 could occur? No, it does not do that. But it, it does provide some better opportunity for drainage in and around the area. I think I'll conclude then generally, without going into the details on the current code and requirements, which are also summarized in the memo, or some of the specifics about where the home falls with respect to those current regulatory elevations, if you will, with just a general comment that the city council certainly has the ability to receive these grant funds from the DNR. And then what was included in the application for the use of those funds would be the purchase of the property, the demolition of the home. I think we included some contingency for asbestos abatement. But then restoring things to basically a, a general vacant lot, a grassy area, if you will, with no home there. And according to the terms of the grant, the, that it would have to stay like that in perpetuity. So the city would not be able to, for example, sell that lot to another home builder for it to be rebuilt on. If we use the funds, we do have to commit to keeping it in a, in an open area kind of condition or state. So there's not enough room there to, to build any sort of flood storage necessarily, but the home would be, the home that has flooded in the past would be removed on the use or basis of those grant funds. It is a one-to-one match, up to, I believe, $120,000. So the DNR would put in $120,000, the city would put in $120,000. And the estimate for overall use of those funds exceeded $240,000. So the city would have to put in its own money, up at, up to and include whatever the total final cost was, to again facilitate all those things I mentioned previously, purchase, demo, re-grading and finishing, restoring the area as well, too. So that is kind of the general summary. As I mentioned before, the DNR does, is looking for direction from the city, whether they would want to use those funds or not. With that, I might turn it to the city attorney for maybe some additional comment or information with respect to the choice in front of the council consideration right now.
So I think Morgan's kind of covered the, the choices. I don't know, in terms of facilitating the discussion, what's the next best step? At this point, staff is looking for some definitive direction. I think, you know, council's had an opportunity to listen to the property owner. We meant for Morgan's report to answer any of the outstanding lingering concerns or events that have happened. We've gone back to 2011. I'm sure there's other things out there, but that's, that's our starting point on this. In terms of options, and again, I don't want to jump the gun here, but after you, you take a look at that report, understand the condition out there, the options as we see them are, one, we can take advantage of the grant proceeds. The, the nice part about that is, we do get up to $120,000 from the DNR to help with this situation. The downside, if you will, is that in essence takes the property off the tax rolls. The city would have to commit at least to another 120 grand to match those funds. And then there's just the, the issue, and I think Morgan alluded to it or touched on it, or it's in the report, of what, what that really accomplishes then. You know, what you're guaranteed at that point is that house will no longer flood because it's no longer there. Whether that's really the best spot for a drainage structure, drainage area, it's not really, it doesn't really suggest that, but at that point, you don't have a house that floods. I think there's considerations regarding what does this mean in the future for other homes? I would encourage you to at least think about and talk about. We aren't talking about a little amount of money. You don't have to use the grant funds. You can decide that what we want to do is purchase it, take a look at it and try and remediate it on our own, with your own money. It's, at this point, there's not a lot to suggest it would be any cheaper than if you would use the tax dollars. Maybe there's a different way to do it. But at that point, you'd have no restrictions. You could turn around and resell the land and go that route. And the final option, and I'm sure there's nuances on all of these, but the final option is to do nothing, status quo. And, you know, the, the city has put in a lot of money to drainage structures, things of that nature. It's unfortunate that this house is in a low spot, but that is, that is something that, you know, turn to the property owner to see if that, that can be managed on his own. And so I, I think those are the three options that, in a broad stroke, we were ready to present to you and have you, you know, at least the start of the conversation. It's a new wrinkle with the DNR in terms of the timing on the using of the grant funds. I think from their perspective, they authorized them a while ago. And I think usually when they do these grants, you submit for the money, you know, you want the money, there's usually not the sort of hang fire on it, if you will. And so I think that's, that's why they're coming back at you on that in terms of, please make a decision by tomorrow or those funds may go elsewhere. So with that, I don't have anything else to add on that. The, candidly, the, the purchase is just a function of some paperwork that would standard and straightforward on our end. And then obviously, status quo doesn't really take much of anything except direction from council. So with that, I'd certainly stand for any questions.
I think we do have a lot of questions, so I'll open it up to the council before I make a comment. Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, is anyone from the DNR here tonight?
No.
I don't think, I doubt it.
Well, absent of someone from the DNR, I mean, I would just assume that we submitted for this grant application and it met their criteria. That's why they've approved it. And that criteria being that this is a program to help mitigate flood areas, right? I mean, it's just, I'm just broadly summarizing that. To me, the fact that we've had issues here, they're documented, understand that they're, you know, one-in-a-hundred-year floods that are happening more commonly, the DNR reviewed this and it met their criteria. So to me, this isn't just a simple basement flooding issue when we get some excess rains. You know, they, they reviewed the information and they said, yes, it meets our criteria. Wondering if maybe our engineer can comment on, on flood easements? And, you know, I know it seems like some people struggle to, to wrap their head around, well, we're just going to buy this property and nothing's going to be there? And that, that's a condition of this, if we utilize the DNR funds? How common are flood easements in, you know, how many do we have in town, if any, in other municipalities? And, and is that just a normal thing that you would see, particularly in this situation where there's a problem property? The city has decided to purchase the property and designated a, you know, flood easement where nothing can be built there to help, you know, potentially, you know, mitigate some of these severe flooding issues? Is that, can you kind of touch on that a little bit?
Sure. Councilmember Thorson? So not an easement, per se, but the city does have areas that are mapped by FEMA. Those maps are updated every 10 to 20 years. Those are areas that have been identified and are also integrated by code with specific restrictions and also watershed rules as well. They tend to be adjacent to water bodies, more, more usual than not, I guess, in my experience. They might be adjacent to a lake or a river or a stream. And basically represent, similar to some of the, the information and topics that we've been talking about here for this, this property, but they represent areas adjacent to water bodies that in an extreme situation, such as a hundred-year flood, just to use that terminology, at what elevation will be inundated. And again, by specific code restrictions against building within the flood plain or placing fill within the flood plain, because if you fill in a flood plain, you're basically removing flood storage and pushing that water elsewhere, which may be an adverse condition for somebody else adjacent to the flood plain. That is the regulatory mechanism that might be more similar to what you're talking about in terms of flood easements. And I'm not aware of any specific easements within the city of North St. Paul. Looks like the attorney has something.
Yeah, the, and I don't know, there could be flood easements. I'm not aware of those. Councilmember Thorson, I think the difference that I would point out is, and Morgan adequate did describe it, is these are areas where they're basically low areas where there's regulations that prohibit the building of structures to begin with. They aren't areas where the city's gone out and spent money to control it. That's just been done by regulation. So there's a little bit of a difference there. But, but those areas certainly do exist.
And I, I would say, from a staff perspective, it's a fair thing, just to be clear for the council, that this particular property does not fall within a FEMA-identified flood zone. It's not a restricted area in terms of placing fill or restricting home activity. We do have those elsewhere, adjacent to Silver Lake, Casey Lake, but not, this particular property is not a mapped flood zone or, or a flood area.
Do you know, Morgan, if the DNR grant, do other homes qualify for that in the, in the city?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, they may. You know, the application that was submitted was only for this one property. And I think, you know, to Councilmember Thorson's point, it met their criteria or standard, which means to me that a home or a property does not need to fall within a FEMA-mapped flood zone, right? I think that, that is something that we can infer from the fact that the, the dollars were allocated to this use, should the council decide to use them. But staff really doesn't have any information to be able to say, you know, how many properties is it, is it a significant number? Is it a significant number based on, you know, past experience or lay of the land? You know, we simply prepared an application very specific to this property and provided that information and it, and it was granted.
Councilmember Thorson?
You mentioned some cost estimates. Where, I mean, we haven't seen anything, to my knowledge, that's been shared, where, where did those come from and when, when were they put together? I mean, what are we basing these cost estimates on?
Councilmember Thorson, so my staff, just using their past experience in terms of general pre-planning, these aren't detailed cost estimates, but general estimates with respect to how much does it take to demolish a building, asbestos abatement? You know, I think that generally, just checking the Ramsey County information for value of property was used for purchase. That's not necessarily a market value or, or an appraisal, but available information and suitable for use for applying for the funds. So that's what was used to prepare the numbers that were included in the application. They were reviewed by the current city manager and viewed to be at least generally accurate with respect to, you know, his experience or with, you know, demolishing homes and that sort of thing, asbestos abatement. And I guess in terms of my perspective, in terms of what was included, it seemed like a relatively, you know, accurate representation of what it would take. I don't have the number right in front of me, but as Soren mentioned earlier, that it, the total did exceed that one-for-one match, 120 plus 120 from the city for 240. It was slightly more than that, if I recall.
And a part of that, there was obviously, the biggest cost would be the acquisition of the home, correct?
That, that would be correct, yeah.
And I know Sean's here. Is it okay to ask the homeowner questions? If he can come up and address the council? Okay. Sean, do you mind?
I'll take a minute.
Do you happen to know what the homeowner, the home accusation cost was in those estimates that you're sharing, that you're stating that potentially the city will have to?
If you give, give me a minute and I will look that up. I don't have it right this second.
So, hey, Sean, thanks for coming. Just a couple of quick questions for you. To date, have, has anyone from the city reached out to you and asked, or any kind of negotiation, just rough estimate on what you would be willing to sell your house to the city for to accomplish this?
No, haven't heard from anybody. Haven't. Haven't. I gave you guys some stuff the last council meeting that I was here, that from my realtor or what. last council meeting that I was here, that, from my realtor or whatnot.
And since?
Haven't heard from anybody since.
Have you, has, has your house been listed for sale?
No, I'm not going to list it. I'm not going to do it. I, I thought about it. I talked to my, my realtor and if this doesn't go through, we're going to figure something else out.
Okay.
And it's not rebuilding or fixing it.
Okay.
So.
I guess my last question will be, you know, once we get this number, if that's something that you would be comfortable with or paying less, you know, just to give, again, give us an idea, because I think.
That can give you a starting plan.
You know, we're, we're, well, if you're willing to share a number right now, I mean, I, what, what is your? And the reason I'm asking these questions is because I think, you know, and again, I'm not, you know, there, I think some assumptions are being made that we're going to have to potentially spend more money than the grant matching, but we haven't even engaged in, in, in getting a real, a rough idea of what you're willing to take. I mean, on the Ramsey County property tax records, it states that the estimated fair market value, or at least what you're being taxed at on this property is two hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars?
Two hundred and three, yeah, right around two ten, two twenty. Well, I wanted two thirty when I talked to my realtor. Two, I actually wanted two fifty if we're going to put it up for sale because that's the way the market's going. And he's like, you're not going to get it from the city, obviously. And I said, well, yeah, I'm willing to drop down if the city purchases it, because this is a, this is a problem.
Yeah.
This isn't just.
And I understand that. You've been here multiple times and we've, we've, we've acknowledged that. And that's why we're here today, as just an option. And just for the record too, because I know this was kind of touched on, and, you know, feel free to go into as much detail as you want, but to date, have I made any promises to you about purchasing your property?
No.
Has anyone at the city made any promises, promises to you about purchasing your property?
The only promise that I thought I had gotten at one point in time was you guys were going to look into buying that property behind me when it went up for sale and build a pond back there and help me.
But as it pertains to your property?
No, nobody's.
No one, and myself included, has made any promises to you about?
Nobody's promised me anything.
Okay. And outside of conversations we've had here, with the exception of maybe a phone call and some emails, updating you on when future meetings are, are going to happen, would you say it's a fair assessment that every conversation we've had about your property has taken place in city workshops and city meetings?
Yes.
At least between you and I?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
For sure.
So while that, while he's waiting, you know, or pulling that up, I guess, you know, i- if we were to potentially purchase this property, I mean, obviously you as a homeowner are going to want to try to get as much money as you can.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if I were in your shoes, I'd have the property up for sale.
I know, I know, but you know.
Yeah, I understand, but if you just let me finish.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You know, so for this to happen, to me, it seems like there's clearly is a unique situation. Maybe there are other properties that are experiencing something similar. They just haven't come to the council, um, and they've addressed it themselves or it's not being addressed. You've made your point very clear that it's of your opinion that these issues are happening because of the way the street is constructed and, and the, the failure of the infrastructure underneath. Now, that's, you're certainly welcome to have that. We've got, we've got estimates from our engineers about road reconstructions and, and trying to expand that capacity and those costs, and they far exceed millions of dollars. And there's still no guarantee that that will solve this issue. Believe it was in 2019, the council authorized the purchase of twenty-two forty-two First Avenue, which is essentially kitty corner to your property, uh, and turned that into essentially a, a excess rain, drainage, pond, whatever the technicality word is. That's about point, according to the property tax records, point five four acres. Your property is point two four acres. And given the proximity to that parcel, um, again, because this is a concern that was brought up, that we're going to be setting a precedent by doing this, that if someone gets some water in their basement, they're going to want to come to the city and have us buy them out. To me, I, you know, I dismiss that because of, A, we, we've done this as recently as 2019 as a part of the two, the road construction pro, project. That obviously was done not in haste. There was, you know, we were relying on engineers and, and that was a solution, um, to this problem. There's still no guarantee it's going to help solve these massive rainfalls that could occur. And we don't have it up here on the screens, but in our packet information, you can clearly see, uh, an example of, of that rainfall. Uh, your whole entire street is just submerged. And again, it's a rare occurrence, but.
It's not a rare occurrence, sir. It's, it happens in the wintertime. I've had to have the city out moving water in the wintertime because.
Well, I'm talking, I'm talking about this picture here that was on July eleventh. I mean, that's not happening in the wintertime. But I understand your, your point is that it continues to happen.
Not just when it rains, it happens in the winter.
Yeah. So there, so there's clearly some issues here. Whether or not the city agrees to purchase your property and turn it into some sort of flood mitigation, isn't necessarily going to be a guarantee, but it will guarantee that this problem goes away for you and your sake and your particular homeowner. And I don't know how, do we have a estimate on the home purchase?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now. Good timing.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot there, but.
It's okay.
No one that's mentioned and we don't have it.
So we had a, for the, if you want to call it the project, then in the application, the total, uh, estimated amount was three hundred thousand. That includes, uh, home acquisition cost estimated at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
The remaining fifty thousand would be some of those other pertinent items.
Okay. It's public record, because it's on your, it's on Ramsey County, but are you willing to share what you purchased your house for?
Purchased it for a hundred thousand. Then I had to refinance to help rebuild because of all that other stuff and pay money, pay a bunch of people back and stuff, so.
So when you.
So I put at least a hundred and fifty into it.
Yeah, okay.
I put at least fifty thousand more into it.
Into the property?
Pretty much, yeah. I had to rebuild my whole garage, my everything.
Because when your basement flooded?
When my basement flooded, everything flooded. It ruined everything.
And was there?
Take out the whole garage, rebuild the whole garage.
Was there existing, uh, sheet rock? Was your basement finished when you?
No, it's not finished. But I lost my furnace. I lost my water heater twice now, you know?
And then, for the record too, you stated when you, when did you purchase the property?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, and it was purchased from a foreclosure, correct?
Yes.
And they're not required to disclose?
Nothing.
Flooding issues because of that?
Buy as is.
Okay. So had, had you known that, would you have bought this property?
No.
Okay.
And that's what makes me so not, makes me so upset. This is the first time I walked in here. The mayor, Kuhn, at the time, says, oh, twenty-four eighty-three, yeah, the previous owners were here complaining about that. That's what I don't want. I don't want to sell my house to somebody or just let it foreclose and let somebody else take over and then move into it, not knowing that it floods.
So here's my last question for you, and, because out of respect to time, we have other stuff on the agenda. And I'm, and it's unfortunate that we're being pressed here tonight to make a decision. Um, but the DNR is, is looking for an answer on this grant. I think it's a good opportunity to help, um, reduce our costs if we go through this. So my question to you is, your, your hope and desire was to get around two fifty if you were to sell it. Now you're saying you, you don't want to sell it because you, you can't sleep with yourself, knowing that you're selling, you're pushing this on, assuming no one else will buy it. If our city's already budgeted two fifty, are you willing to come down on your price to, to bring it down to a level where we don't have to exceed the matching grant with the DNR?
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, I've definitely come down on, from two fifty or something, but I'd really like to talk to my realtor before I make any.
That's, I just, I just want to know if you were hard, you know, because in real, you know, if you were just saying, no, I want this and that's it. I mean, that's.
No, I'm willing, I'm definitely willing to work with you. I am not here to, to just make a whole bunch of money. I just want to move on with my life.
Well, I think that's part of the discussion, because this was a foreclosed property, you know, and you want market rate on it. And I'm, and I don't want to get into, you know, the numbers right now, but I think that, you know, when you buy a foreclosed property, you take on a risk. Anytime you, you know, any type of investment like that.
I understand.
You take a risk. And that risk, I don't know if it was a flooding. I don't know what it was, you know. We don't know that for sure, for a fact of why that homeowner sold that. There are other houses in the neighborhood that do flood. I do have an email from you, uh, a couple of years ago in regards to the house across from you that floods just as much as you or even more.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so my concern is that, are we opening ourselves up to another property? You know, we do this, another property. And if somebody else in the neighborhood or somebody else on the other side of town has the same, similar problems that you do. My basement flooded that same, that same year.
Mm-hmm.
And I had major damage done to my basement that was finished, you know. This was a one-time event that, uh, what I think affected a lot of us.
I lost a breezeway, a garage. I didn't just lose my basement. I lost half of my house that had to be rebuilt.
That's, that's.
It wasn't, it's not just carpet and some drywall and some end tables. It was half of my house. You know, everything we owned was down in that basement.
In two thousand and eleven?
No, two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, in two thousand and eleven. And then the last, the other one, I can't remember when that one exactly was. I, I called Dudak in the middle of it and he was like, what, what do you want me to do? There's nothing we can do. It's water. It goes where it wants to go, you know? Well, then, I lost another water heater, you know, and lost almost another furnace. I got lucky that.
Right. And I'm saying, Sean, there's a lot of, lot of homes.
I understand that.
That flooded.
Then you guys need to do some more work around here in your drainage. You really do. If you got that many issues, I understand it's built a hundred and some years ago, blah, 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 blah.
Right.
But you need to start updating some stuff. You know, and I know you're doing it. I see it everywhere. I've seen it on the street right behind me somehow.
Yeah, we're, we're doing our best to try to, you know, get up to the codes and we got a lot of infrastructure that needs to be done. But going back to, you know, your house specifically, you know, we have to decide, are we setting the precedence here?
You're not setting, all right, I guess. You, if you're not setting precedence, then people don't lose half their houses over a flood. And people don't keep losing things. People don't, I can't even park my truck out in the street. And it's not from, and he said that they put the new drainage in the back. That does nothing for me, absolutely nothing. Unless they put something from in between mine and the next door house to the left of me, if you're looking at it, a drain from there back to your pond, it does nothing for me because it all comes from your street. It, all winter long, I got to push water to the drain. I don't have a drain. He said you have a drain. The drain's down freaking two hundred feet that way. And it goes uphill from there. And your study says that it doesn't or something somehow, but the drain dips down. If you just walk it, just come on over after the meeting. We'll just walk it. You can't honestly tell me that this isn't a problem.
I, I know it's a problem. I mean, it was built nineteen fifty, fifties, you know, and this is, it's been there a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and so, I mean, I, to wrap things up here, my intention wasn't to have you to come up and, and, you know, argue or, I just wanted to ask some questions. You know, we're mindful of what's gone on. We're, we're faced with a time crunch here now. Uh, and I guess it basically is just up to the council to make a decision on whether or not they feel this is in the best interest of the city. Um, so unless anyone else has specific questions for Sean, yeah?
Councilmember Peterson?
How did, how did you fare last night? We got, yesterday we got a lot of rain.
Stressed. I mean, it didn't, it didn't fill up or anything, but it's, it's stressful times, you know? It's, and I honestly, I don't know how he says that it can circle up and go around to that new pond because that second avenue comes down. When it hits my driveway, it starts going back up. So there's no way, unless it gets to be, if you stand at the bottom of my driveway and look out at the top of the streets above my head, so how is this street going to go up five feet, eight inches? I don't get it though. It's, I'm not an engineer.
Right, we're not engineers here.
Common sense says that it's not going to, you know?
You know, we're hearing from the engineer that work has been done back there and it should help with the.
It's not going to help. I lived there, man. I've gone through this so many times.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, so many times. And I sit and watch it. I sit and watch it all winter. How can that, how can you say it's not a problem if, I've even sent an email with me walking through it.
Sean, I.
Scott showed up, said, oh, you just got to, you just got to unplug your drain. It's all frozen. I don't have a drain. It doesn't go anywhere. That's my problem. That's what I've been trying to tell you guys for the past ten years. I don't have a drain. The water has nowhere to go but up my driveway, to my house, in my garage, in my breezeway, in my basement.
How many times does that happen?
Three. So, or two into the basement, up the driveway, at least three, more than that actually. It happens all winter long. I have, it's a good thing I got SUV or else I wasn't getting my driveway. It's just, it melts, it freezes, and then it's huge ice chunks and.
I mean, I, personal, I live in a, in a cul-de-sac and at times it does get the water during the winter because you've got dams, ice dams or whatever, and it does create some sort of a, a dam or whatever. And I have water comes up into my driveway, but it recedes.
In front of my, it doesn't recede in my house. The city's had to come out many a times and move it with machinery because my back's getting old. I can't do it anymore. I just, it's, they have to move it with machines. That's, that's a problem.
What, what are they moving?
The water and the ice. No, not snow, ice shovels, the snow. It just melts and it floods, it backs up and it doesn't go to, to the drain because it goes uphill.
Councilmember Peterson?
This is for Dan, our finance man. Um, Dan, hi. Where are we going to get this matching funds? Where is that coming from?
Councilmember Peterson, that's a very good question. Um, I have not come up with a, a way to fund this at this point in time, but, um, if your direction is that this is something you're going to pursue, uh, we will come back with a recommendation.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
That's it? Councilmember, why?
Yeah, I want to thank you for sharing and, um, you know, I apologize that that's, you know, the situation. Um, oftentimes I see that here at the city, we offer different methods in terms of, um, addressing housing stock, improving the housing stock. Is that something that you've tapped into in terms of your available resources that the city already offers?
I guess, no, I guess I really don't understand what you're asking. Like, grant money or something? Or, no, I haven't, I have not.
Okay. Um, I, the reason I ask that is oftentimes when home, you know, us as homeowners, we face different situations, whether it be a foreclosed home or our furnace goes out, life happens. Um, I'm just curious on, you know, um, if those resources have been of help to you. Um, there are other loans and low interest loans that kind of help supplement and mitigate, um, you know, home issues.
Haven't, haven't looked into it, I guess. I don't, not familiar with it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Cole?
First, Sean, thank you. Um, you're holding together better than I would. I, 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 I hear the emotion. I hear the drive. I hear the frustration, uh, in your voice. It's just, I just want to recognize you for that. And you're probably holding your cool whole heck of a lot better than I would. Um, I really only have two, two questions. Um, in 2011, when the, basically what, from my understanding, is really kind of the first time that anything happened, um, did you have a sump pump or was a sump pump installed to help mitigate some of the water issues?
I already have a sump pump.
You do?
We ended up with three pumps down in the basement.
Okay.
All the water out.
Okay. And then the only other question that I had was, um, in, in looking at the information provided and listening to the city engineer, I also recognized that one of the egress windows is, is at a lower grade. Was anything, is, was anything done to, to bump that up another tier or so to help move water around going into that window well?
No, we moved some dirt a little bit around there and done a little bit, but.
Okay.
Not anything to the actual house or the window.
That was all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You know, Sean, I, I feel for you. I mean, it's been since two thousand and eleven and I, I just feel that, you know, it's, it's a problem for many homeowners. I get pictures from different residents throughout the city during major rainfalls. Um, I mean, this one in two thousand and eleven, you know, is probably the worst that our city has experienced in, I don't know how long. Uh, I don't know, Morgan, is that like one of the, the worst, worst ever that we've ever had or?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so.
I think the state.
So, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and eighteen were two of the wettest years in Minnesota history since they've been keeping record. However, that was. However, that was spread out over an entire year, but storm over storm, um, the 2011 one is of note. Uh, June of 2014, we had a heavy snowfall winter with a rapid melt and then a big rainfall in June. I don't remember how large.
I think Sean, you had it at that time too.
That might've been the second one that Sean mentioned, yeah. And then there have been some that I'm aware of, just anecdotally through longtime residents prior to 2011. So, you know, it, it has occurred. I did look up the precipitation on that July 15th date and it was recorded as in North St. Paul as five inches in 24 hours and a little bit more actually in Oakdale and Points East, but we kind of got the brunt of that flash storm, whatever happened that particular day. And it, and that's, the recording is over 24 hours. The five inches might've fallen in less time than that and it's not just about the amount of water, it's about, uh, how short of a period of time that it falls. If it all falls in one hour, that's, you know, akin to receiving much more water over 24 or 48 or longer period of time, right? So that's what actually causes some of these flash flood events when we actually do see standing water in low areas. So I can't say that it's worst, the worst, but it's definitely, you know, of note.
It was major.
It's major, yeah.
How did you do a few weeks ago in August?
I, I don't, I think when that storm came, I think I was at work, so, but there was no water in my basement. I got home, so.
Cause August was the 10th wettest on, on record.
Yeah.
You know, so we had major, major. So, you know, I just go back to 2011 and 2014, those are two just huge events that our city, you know, went through and a lot of flooding, you know, that went on, not just your property, through other properties. So, you know, with, with, with what I've seen and what I've, you know, hearing from the, uh, the engineer, you know, we are trying to help with that ponding in the back and, you know, I myself would not be in favor of doing the DNR grant only because I feel it's gonna set up some sort of precedence in, in our city for other flooding because that, there are a lot of other homes that, that do flood. So that's just where I sit and I don't know how the other.
I've never seen anybody up here talking about it, so.
Right.
I, I feel like I'm, I don't know, whatever. All right.
And that's just me.
I know, I understand.
So I'm just one vote and I, I wanna hear from the other council members because we need to decide for you, you know, what you wanna do. And I, you know, I agree with Councilmember Thorson, you know, maybe you have a realtor that would, that would sell the house. You know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna give it to someone, but that.
He doesn't wanna sell the house. When I talked to him, he talked to his firm or whatever, his realty company, and they were talking to some people and they just said, no, it's, they believe it's some sort of, if it's coming from the street, it's some sort of civil engineering issue that the street needs to be fixed before we sell it. It's.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I'm for it. Sorry, microphone's off. I'm for utilizing this grant to do this. I disagree that this is gonna set a precedent. Again, I'll point to the 2242 First Avenue. There was no such concerns over that for that purpose. I view this as a very similar purpose in an area that is prone to flooding. And, you know, the fact that this potentially could happen in other areas of the city, then we need to address those as they come about. And I think that the matching funding, you know, this increase in the, what do they call it? This isn't CARESAC money, this is some federal funds that we're scheduled to get some 1.3 million dollars or something around those lines, that this could certainly come out of our surface water fund as that could be allocated. I mean, there's all sorts of different ways this money could come to, to help resolve this issue. You know, and this DNR grant is something that it's not a once, one-time shot. I mean, if there are other properties in town, we can apply for it again. And if it qualifies, you know, I don't know if that's part of their criteria where if you've already been awarded it, they, they put you at the bottom of the list or whatnot, but this certainly isn't a one-time only thing from my understanding how that program works. So I'd be full support of, of us pursuing that and negotiating with Sean on a purchase price of the home and, and demolishing the home and turning it into a flood mitigation area.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I'm sick of, well, I like Sean a lot. I see him a lot, but I don't like him here. No, I see Sean other places. Yeah, I think, I think with the DNR and likely fully vetted it, so they know what they're doing and I would agree to go with this.
Councilmember one?
Unfortunately, I, I believe that I will not support the, the grant. I think that the data that our engineer showed us was that it was a localized, or there was no systemic issue and it was cared for in terms of the infrastructure. So here, two very conflicting things in, in regards to what the, the engineering data says and then the experience. And I don't see it being more systemic issue if I saw maybe multiple properties or parcels that had similar issues, because we are putting this into green space or drainage space so that, you know, would rely on the perks to adopt, you know, that. I just feel that the, that it's not systemic and I cannot support it.
Councilmember Cole?
Comes down to me, huh? Sean, unfortunately, I'm, I'm not in, not in support of the DNR piece. I truly believe you have an issue. I truly believe that there are things that could be done to potentially mitigate it. I have to believe the documentation provided by engineering. And whether it sets precedents or not, I guess that's, that's.
You guys bought a house right on the corner.
But my concern is the fact that.
It's precedent.
That there's an investment made by the city into property that will be, uh, no longer be able to be used by the city in, in any way, shape or form for perpetuity.
That's, you guys are.
So I think we're, we're not gonna go after the DNR grant then. So you have options and you said you can work with your realtor on that.
All right, well.
City manager, Frandl?
Thank you, Mayor. Next up for the topic for agenda is ISD 622 North High School Conditional Use Permit, building height variance requests and parking lot improvement discussion. I believe we have Eric here from Engineering to discuss this.
I like it. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I think, uh, you know, I'm not gonna go over the entire presentation. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things because the biggest issue we had or the biggest discussion that was had at the planning commission was the reduction in parking and that's what we've, with the school district, been working on since April of this year. But in summary, the school district is looking to construct an 11 classroom, three-story addition onto the west side of the building. There are a number of other interior improvements and security improvements which would include a thousand-foot addition at the east entrance. With this work, the high school, well, so to perform that work, a conditional use permit and it ended up being a building height variance was needed to apply for. The school or the planning commission reviewed the recommendations on the addition. There were a couple of grading and landscape issues that were discussed and, and have been resolved with their revised plans. There's one outstanding condition of, um, this is a, a large north-facing facade that the, uh, school's engineer states limits the windows that could be used due to the new building code. And so there's some mitigation items that they could look at for that design. But when it came down to it, um, the biggest discussion we had was over parking. Uh, there were a few issues in that they currently have their student parking on the east, or excuse me, on the, um, on the, they currently have their student parking on the west side of the building and their staff parking on the east side of the building. The east side of the building has three accesses onto 11th and 11th Avenue. They are proposing to reduce the entrances on the east side from three to two. They are proposing to remove the circular drive essentially to the south or behind the school. And then they are proposing to install a parent drop-off staging area on the west side of the school building. So between the addition, between the installation of additional bike, or excuse me, bus parking and the parent drop-off, the parking onsite drops by 107. Now, um, what that means is there's currently 427 parking stalls at the existing high school. They are proposing to have 325. That's the 102 reduction. So looking at the school itself, it's a better than 20% reduction. Now, they have a parking agreement with St. Mark's Church, which is 104 stalls. I mean, it's, it's a nice opportunity in that it's adjacent to the school site. These are two uses that are using their parking lots at different times, so nice advantage to be able to have a large parking lot that close by. So currently, the total number of parking is about 530 stalls, including St. Mark's. They would go down to about 330, 340 with the proposed changes. At the time that the planning commission conducted the public hearing in April, uh, there was no, there wasn't a parking or traffic study conducted. So the city and the school district partnered on the funding for a parking study. That parking study came back that with the continued parking agreement for St. Mark's, their proposed parking plan would meet the high school's needs. And again, I just wanna emphasize that it's with the St. Mark's parking that they meet the need. So, um, the, in your staff report.
Do they have a written agreement with the St. Mark's? I mean, is it something that?
They stated right now that it's a one-year, you know, it's for this school year. What we are proposing in the resolution is that they maintain a five-year written agreement with St. Mark's. But yes, they, they have one. We are asking for that to be adopted as a condition within the CUP. So with that, I think, you know, I would turn it over to Morgan to see if there's any additional information he wants to talk about regarding the traffic study, but we also have representatives from the school district here who may want to add in to that.
Thanks, Eric. Mayor and council, so I'd, I'd ask Mike or another representative to prepare to speak here briefly. The goal with bringing this in front of the workshop was just to give you kind of a general understanding, maybe answer any quick questions ahead of time before we get into the regular meeting where there'd be a formal proposal. We'll have the traffic engineer here to provide a summary on kind of that parking and circulation study and, and what the findings but were, but Eric did summarize them certainly well enough in terms of with that additional parking at St. Mark's. It appears to meet the need. I would simply just add that all other kind of conditions and things associated with the school district's application here appear to be pretty typical and not really significant. There were some concerns, certainly when you reduce parking onsite at a school, which is at times, you know, special events, but also regular operations, loading, unloading, you know, morning and afternoon, there, there can be some operational challenges at any school. And certainly we've seen them at North High over the years. And so I think it was a good effort and the school was gracious enough or the school district was gracious enough to help fund that traffic study, but also to take the time with their project to be able to allow the city to kind of more thoroughly vet the proposal or the recommendation for approval that the city council will have in front of us at the regular meeting here later tonight. So that's all I would have to add and I, Mike, did, did you wanna, yeah, either up here, yeah, that's fine.
And I think the biggest issue for us is, is the parking.
Hi, uh, councilmembers, mayor. I'm Mike Boland. I'm the operations and health and safety supervisor for the school district, currently working with our construction projects. The, it seems like you've got some issues with the St. Mark's. Just a little background on the St. Mark's parking, we've been doing that for 25 years and we'll be happy to do whatever you guys need us to do. They'll be, what's nice about that agreement is, is we actually, we do their plowing for them, we do their, their lining for them, and then also we do a little stipend ahead of time for them. So it's very good for the church. It's great for us. We could utilize that property. Couple of little quick points that I wanna bring up about St. Mark's also as we, we've had that partnership for over 25 years. I think we're not gonna have, that's not gonna go away, but I'd be happy to, and I think they'd be happy to have something a little bit more formal. We do have something formal, we just have a written, a little written thing up there telling us what we're gonna do with them, what's our responsibility, their responsibilities, and we can make that a little bit more formal and a longer process if need, need be, so. The other thing you've done and look at that too is a little bit for, um, we do have some student enrollment, stuff like that. We have a lot more, we have online enrollment right now. I don't know if you guys noticed this, but we had, we had, we, we thought we're gonna about have about 450 online enrollment students right now. We've, right now we're at about 530. I know that 82 was the last number I saw from North High and that's full-time students. We also have some part-time online student activities on that one also. So, and most of our students, our demographics has changed a great deal in North St. Paul. A lot of kids do not have cars, so they're not really parking and driving as we used to be able to charge for parking over there. Right now it's free because we don't have that many kids parking. St. Mark's right now is not being utilized to its full potential during the day. The, it was a great partnership over here with the city in North St. Paul. These guys, we've been working together to drive, making this work, the parking situation. But mostly what we're trying to do here is a good, a good thing for the drop-off situations that are happening right now for parent-student drop-off. That actually I think is something that we haven't addressed right now in this, but it's in the study and it's, it seems like the, the design we've put together here is gonna get the most cars off the, off the street, off 11th over there, which is, which seems to be constantly being plugged up over there, so. And also just a couple of other things here for, um, our, I'm thinking we got everything here. Hey, I'm sorry, I'm just looking here. Yeah, if there's any other questions on that, I'm sorry, just, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, so go ahead.
Councilmember Peterson?
Being a parishioner at St. Mark's and I, Pastor Mary's awesome. And I know you have a good repertoire, you know, repertoire. I think it would be good to get something, you know, maybe a 10, what, you wanted a five-year contract or something? I don't think she'd be opposed. I know you do good things and we do, could do things for North High. We do a staff breakfast in, in the beginning of school, so just in case it would turn over and you get another pastor. But I mean, it has been a very good relationship, so.
And, and councilmember Peterson, I've gone through, I don't know how many pastors over there.
I know you have.
Been there for like.
They're all pretty decent.
And they're all decided to.
They're all awesome.
They see how great this is, a great deal for everybody.
Yeah, no, it's a win-win.
It's a win-win. But yes, we'd be happy to do this agreement, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I guess my concerns aren't as much with the parking because that's where my understanding was that, you know, things are changing, especially with enrollment. I know we're here to address the parking issue, or, you know, but you mentioned enrollment with this, with the school district 622, we're gonna see anticipate, I think it's like 400 some sing- 400 some single-family homes over off of 40th and Oakdale where the old, through in my nation. There's the two apartment complexes of the 100, 100 townhome units here in, in North St. Paul. Um, and just questions that I've had from constituents about open enrollment and, and can you just briefly clarify that for the record? What's, what is open enrollment versus, is it closed enrollment where it's just limited to people who live within the boundary?
Um, I can't give you those numbers right now because I don't have them in front of me. Um, but we'd be happy to get those numbers for you. Um, I don't, I guess I don't have them with me right now. So
Sure.
I don't wanna give you just a bunch of numbers out there, so.
But am I right to understand that, that there's districts that just say you have to live within the boundary and that's essentially called a closed enrollment policy versus ours?
Yeah.
That's open, meaning you can, you can live in malax and come down here and, and attend school if, if you choose?
Correct.
Okay. And, and I guess that's my concern is that, you know, if there's issues with, with, you know, you need to do this addition for, for, for anticipating increased enrollment, but part of that is because the school district chooses to have open enrollment versus serving the needs of the people that live in the district. Um, and then, I guess my other concern was that, you know, I, I drove by today and I noticed too the empty parking lot on property, uh, the lot across the street at St. Mark's. And then where I used to park when I attended school was actually down by Kunkel Field because that was the only free lot. Other, the other lots were, you had to pay, uh, 80 bucks at, in 2002, 2000, 99 to 2002, that was a lot of money. Um, and for someone who attended Elsie Webster Elementary School, John Glenn Middle School, and I was the first freshman class in the new North High and graduated 2002, I got to see that building brand-new, brand spanking new. And I haven't been in there inside since, but I have driven by outside as all my years. And it seems like, you know, the outside of the building, it's, there's like moss or something growing on the brick. And, and just attending John Glenn and, and Elsie Webster, and all those were constructed in the 60s, but when I attended in the 90s, it was clearly evidence that there's just no upkeep, no maintenance. And so my concern is that, you know, again, this is more of a school district concern, but it, you know, we're here tonight asking the council to approve this project and a conditional use permit. What assurances are we gonna have that the district is gonna maintain this investment and not just let it deteriorate to the point where they say, well, it's beyond fixing. We need a new building like what they're going through now with all this, you know?
So, Councilmember Thorson, um, as a school district now, there's, uh, different funding mechanisms that we didn't have in the past. Uh, we have, uh, long-term facility maintenance funding dollars that we didn't have in the past. So it's addressing a lot of those issues that we can levy, just like you guys do, for some of those, uh, some of those dollars that before we'd have to go up to the taxpayer and ask for dollars for those things for, in a, in a bonding situation. Um, with these brand-new buildings and stuff like that, we'll have opportunities to keep them up, up, we can, because of these, uh, these funding mechanisms we have in place right now. So it's a great question. Um, in the past, uh, the school districts would get these brand-new buildings up there and then they wouldn't have any money to, to keep them going. They'd have to use capital dollars that they had very limited funding for capital dollars. And now we have opportunities to keep these buildings, uh, running. Um, a lot of those issues you're talking about over at North High right now, those are all being addressed in this, uh, this renovation of that space. Um, the, the problems you're seeing over at North right now will be taken care of in those, in those projects, so.
You also mentioned online enrollment.
Mm-hmm.
Is, what's the, i- is there any serious, uh, discussion about how that potentially could change in, in the future for the, the, the district and maybe not need such large facilities anymore if that's the case, even despite having increased enrollment figures? You're just gonna have less students coming into physical buildings?
Right, constant, constant, uh, moving target on this one. So we're still, still, we, with COVID and the different things that have happened in the, in the last three years, uh, that's one of the reasons why we've got that, uh, the online is just booming right now. Um, parents feel safer right now having them, their kids at home doing some of these things that, that we're seeing. Um, it's a moving target. I just, we can't really, I can't give you any really good, we don't, we don't know yet. It's, it's just, it's too, it's too early to tell what's going to happen. Uh, the biggest thing we do, do realize though in the elementary schools, it, we need the kids in the elementary buildings to learn. That's what we've been finding out right now. So we're hoping to, like I said, we're getting brand-new facilities in North St. Paul, Oakdale and Maplewood. There's some beautiful buildings going up. We'd be happy to bring you guys out and look at our new buildings. I'm very proud of the buildings we're putting up right now. So, so.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, thank you for coming and, and talking with us. Um, are there, um, uh, additional modes of transportation that you see a lot of the high school students using or, um, encouraged to use?
Yes, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Wong, um, we actually brought up, uh, in some of our meetings with the city, they've brought up, uh, other modes of transportation such as biking, walking. Um, and we addressed a lot of those issues in the, in the CUP. So, um, hopefully those things will be coming down the line. Yes, there's multiple terms of, a lot of our students actually are bused outside. They're coming in and they're using our bus lines that are right in front of our buildings also, not just our, our, our district busing, so.
Thank you. And then, um, so with the, uh, agreement with St. Mark's, um, uh, that leaves it to be sufficient amount of parking. So if there wasn't that agreement, what kind of disparity in parking lot spaces are we looking at?
Yeah, thank you. Our, our, our traffic engineer is, is not here yet. He will be here for the regular meeting. Um, and, you know, it's, it's a big delta of 104 stalls. I, I would need his help to say exactly where between what it is with St. Mark's and whether that whole 104 is needed or only a portion of that.
Thank you. And then, um, and I agree with Councilmember Peterson in, in that, um, it would be great to see a long-term agreement, um, moving forward. But, thank you.
It sounds like an option. Uh, Councilmember Thorson kinda mentioned in regards to the public parking lot down, down by Kunkel Field.
Yeah, that's, that's what, I mean, Councilmember Thorson was very smart because you couldn't park all the way down there. It's a bit of a walk.
I'm sure he wasn't the only one parking.
He probably wasn't happy doing that, but he, he did get to, get to school, so, without having to pay.
But we do have some future possibility of future parking.
Happy to work with you guys on that one.
Work with that. You just have to plow a lot and-
Be other things we have to work on, so.
Just kidding. Uh, Councilmember Cole, anything?
Um, just, just a couple of quick things. One, um, the elevation pictures of what it is envisioned to look like is beautiful. Um, fully always continue to support anything going on with the school, especially when it's the, you know, um, exterior, interior, the addition too. Um, I had to scratch my head in a couple of spots though. Um, one of which is the addition of 11 classrooms, um, but it showed enrollment decreasing. So what helped me and, I guess, helped me understand a little bit the need for additional classroom size if you're anticipating the enrollment of the school to decline?
Well, right now, we're, we've, we're utilizing those classrooms differently than they were in the past. Um, some of the classrooms are, I actually have an architect here that we're gonna have him pop up here real quick, if that's okay. But, uh, there's, when we did the studies, uh, and we went through, um, this is what we came up with. Go ahead and I'll let you come on up, Sean.
Hi, I'm Sean Kelly with Wald Architects. I think the biggest driver to that is that there are several classrooms that are actually being hosted at the DEC building, which is a detached facility from the high school. So students who drive to North High to go to school at North High, then walk across the parking lot to a different building. So that's probably the primary reason why we're building new classrooms attached to the high school, is to alleviate that safety concern and frankly, that disconnection of, you know, school structures.
Okay, so, so it's just better to, different utilization of, of basically the same space?
Correct.
So utilization of the, of the building to the east? If there, is the goal to have no classes in there then?
Correct. Right now, we're utilizing our online, uh, we have a, a whole classroom utilizing for online for teachers in those areas so they can do online teaching in the, on that third level. Um, we'll bring those all over to the new North High with the addition and then we'll alleviate that one, every hour of, you know, 350 kids going across on, uh, on, on castle down there, so.
Okay. Um, and then, I, I, I do. I keep going back and, and I get hung up on the parking piece. Um, so thank you for addressing the, that portion of it up front. Um, and for some reason, I lost the presentation that's in the council packet with, with all the numbers. And there were, there were a lot of numbers going back forth on, on parking and everything else, but I appreciate that. Uh, back in the envelope math that I did was, I was reviewing it, was it looks like overall parking spaces were gonna decrease 20, 24%, somewhere in that, in that time, in that range. Uh, when I looked at, um, parking dedicated strictly to students, it looks like that was gonna be decreased about 31%. Uh, staff parking, the staff parking lot remained consistent with maybe the addition of a couple, four or five additional spots. I think were gonna be added in there, but my assumption is that wouldn't be student parking. That would still remain, uh, I think there were three things. It was staff something and something, but I don't remember seeing student as part of that listing.
Mostly staff going in.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Um, so when I take a look at the overall decline in student parking and weigh that against the percentage to St. Mark's, if that relationship with St. Mark's ever goes south, what are the alternatives that it listed? There were other, other potential parking alternatives available. Wha- what are those? Cause if, if I did the math right, that's 40 to 50% of your spaces for students are now at St. Mark's.
Correct. And right now, they're not being utilized. You probably might have six or seven spots being taken right now. Just a reminder on that one. But, yes, that's correct.
All right. That's, it, those are just, my, my, both my boys graduated from North and I paid parking. So
Yeah.
Um, they weren't smart enough like you there, Councilmember Thorson, to walk. They wanted, they wanted the premier spots.
Oh, I made my kids walk.
So those, and, so I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Wong. A long-term agreement with the, with the church, I think, goes a long way as far as my comfort level, um, when I started looking at spaces. Other than that, I got nothing.
Okay. That it? I think that's it.
That's all that's left.
That's it? Okay. I appreciate it. Uh, yeah, parking is my biggest issue, you know, cause if it goes out onto the street and then into the neighborhoods, you know, that's when we hear it, here at the council. So that's, it's a big issue for us. So, well, thank you and, uh, we'll, uh, I don't think we have anything else right now, so, motion to adjourn the, the workshop.
I'll move, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson. Second by Councilman Wong. Any discussion? Not all of us in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Uh, we'll adjourn. We got about, uh, 10 minutes.